All right, so welcome everyone. This is the Pupet School Committee meeting for Wednesday, May 25th. Thank you everyone for basically rescheduling for me. So I guess I ended up creating a forum issue. So I'm glad we were able to get everyone together. You all of us, congratulations for your win on the school committee. Those other races are very hard, so.
Mr. Blank put in a good showing.
Yeah, well, you never know. Before we get started, I, yeah. I'm not chair. Okay, so you start this one?
But it's just more.
All right. Go forward then.
So this is the only school committee meeting that technically I start because this is our reorganization meeting. So we are starting the new cycle. So we will be taking nominations for chair and then whoever the chair is gets to take over. However, if I may, we recently suffered a huge loss in our districts with the loss of Joe Chaves. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, but I want to tell you a little bit about him. Joe was someone that I worked with for the 10 years that I've been in district. He served on the Kingston School Committee for 15 years. He was on Silver Lake School Committee for 11 years. He had a huge impact on Plington although not all of you may have known him because he was also very active on Union 31. And as our Plington students went up to Silver Lake, he was very active on that. Joe was selfless, incredibly dedicated, and was someone who did not have his own agenda. What he really was here for was for the kids. And he didn't even have children in the school districts anymore, but continued to serve to make sure that our students' needs were met. On a personal level, it's been a huge loss. And I just would like us to recognize his dedication to his service and to thank him. His was a life well lived. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. So I'd like to.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Superintendent-elect, whatever I call you, Joy.
I was official. Okay, go ahead.
The committee also wanted to say some words about Mr. Chaves passing, especially in light of the amount of family he has here in Plington. We want to extend our heartfelt condolences and sympathies to his family. And I know that I will remember an honor of the time I got to sit next to him on Silver Lake.
Thank you. I'd like to now take nominations for chair of Plington School Committee.
I would like to nominate John to be the chair of Plington School Committee.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like you're it. Enjoy. Thank you.
Now my meeting?
Now you're meeting.
There we go.
Thank you.
I guess I'd also like to then therefore entertain motions for Vice Chair and Secretary.
Yep, and you have a list in your packet, so we can sort of fill that in as we go along.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. In checking with consistency with Robert's Rules of Order, it is permitted for me to make a recommendation that we reorganize the school committee in the fashion that it was organized in prior. So without any amendments or any dissenting votes, we make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So we're keeping it as is, I believe?
So.
Perfect, that is very.
We're very lucky to have everyone back and have that consistency.
Lovely, thank you. Wonderful.
Okay. Is the official?
Okay.
Right, so what happens when we do meetings on Wednesday? Okay, so jumping back to our agenda now that we have things sorted, I'd just like to acknowledge visitors. We have Mrs. Rudy and Ms. Quinosi with us this afternoon, so hopefully we'll be able to keep up the efficiency so we all can get out and enjoy this late summer day. Actually, I brought this back with me from Washington, but the weather yesterday wasn't quite so nice. So there we go. We have minutes.
And if I may, there were two changes that we made to the minutes since we sent them out to you. We noticed that the under-school committee correspondence, you'll notice it's highlighted, it accidentally said the town's legal counsel instead of school department, and Fred Dupree is our legal counsel. And the other note change is on the back page, "School Choice Students Families" is who we elected for school choice. So those were two changes since we sent them out by June 1st attachment.
And then motion of the minutes. Motion to accept the minutes from our April 25th, 2016 meeting. As amended?
As amended.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. And then we have executive session minutes as well. Make a motion to accept the executive session minutes. Joy, would you like to hold or can we release?
Why don't we hold right now?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the executive session minutes for Monday, April 25th, 2016, and to hold them.
And I would suggest that we do them as amended. Jason's last minute must have helped in the last thing.
Little things like that never bothered me, but the official record, that's fine.
Whoopsie.
Do I have a second as amended? All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I also have minutes from our concurrent meeting that was held at town meeting, but I did not distribute them yet, so I think we will have to wait till our next meeting to approve this.
Okay. I did not have any correspondence. Do they have any to send? New business. Okay. Unfinished business, do we have an update on the water?
We do. Christine.
I have an update that was sent to me right here. He had reached out to Garrett Keegan, and Garrett has said that based on his last meeting with DEP, there were some changes that had to be made, so he's finishing up on those changes that had to be made. And there were some limitations based on the space available for the equipment to fit in, so they had to get some additional, there was some additional work to make that piece work. And he believes he'll be getting this to the school committee and to the principal for student judges shortly.
Okay. Follow-up for the meeting as well. Let's see what I'm doing. Make sure the footage's moving on. Go on. Okay. Anything on the?
John, sorry, I'm on the line. The lead school drinking water assistance, are we doing anything with that program?
Thank you for bringing that up. We looked at that. It requires a tremendous amount of extra work, and we already have a screening process in place that has worked for us. So when Christine and I spoke about it, we did not believe it was adding anything to be helpful.
And the new system is going to address those issues above and beyond screening anyways?
Exactly. And we already have, we've had an ongoing testing program. But thank you for bringing that up, Mike.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. Yeah, we looked at it and it seemed quite worthy. Brands can be fun sometimes.
What would you want to do this? New business?
If you do have a little question, anything else you want to add on the budget after the meeting?
Okay. Okay, that rules us on the standing committees. Administrative review?
No meeting.
Nothing. Negotiations? Nothing. Is Union 31?
We do not have a meeting scheduled, but we will need one over the summer, probably to address some bids.
Mr. President, PAC? We actually have a PAC meeting tonight. We will be presenting the first run-through of the budget. I do need to let you know that the budget is looking not as nice as you would hope and that the increases are being worked on. We're trying to cap them at 5% or less and then after that, we're going to establish a scheme for tuition.
And this is based on a number of enrollments? Does that have some impact?
Correct. The way that PAC manufactures its numbers is a lot more complicated in some ways because it is the amount of expenses divided by the amount of students. Enrollment is down right now, which is difficult this time of year and hope that PAC can kind of clear out this.
Right. But you have to set the budget regardless.
By law, we do. We have to have two reads and we have two meetings left, so we're starting.
Policy?
Domain schedule.
And capital improvement?
So just wanted to congratulate everybody for their hard work with the security system that was packed at town meeting. I'd also like to take an opportunity to thank Chief Dillon again for all of his hard work and answering many, many questions from board members and school administrators who didn't necessarily know the ins and outs, so without whom could have done it. I'd also like to again thank the finance committee for really taking the time to explain the need for a long-term capital plan of sorts from the Denit. And John and I did sit down and come up with some ideas using the consultants who are currently working with the town to generate some long-term goals for capital improvement. The next one on our list is the playgrounds to look at some modernization. And I would appreciate if the board would allow me, much like I did last year, to reach out and start gathering some information.
I mean, I think that makes sense, especially with the summer coming up because once we get back into the fall, it's busy and we need to start getting an idea of what a bit of the breadbox we're dealing with.
Exactly. Okay. I was also wondering, at town meeting, we passed $250,000 for the highway department for road repair. I didn't know if we'd reached out and saw if any of that was going to take care of our driveway as well, because that was one of our concerns that we did not bring up at town meeting. And I didn't know if we could reach out perhaps to the highway department and ask if some of that funding is going to go towards our driveway or if we need to put that on our capital plan.
I can reach out. I'm going to start by going to FinCon because I'd like to, because they have had access from what the Congress was doing. So start with that and then go to Mr. McLeary. My guess is the 250 has nothing to do with that. That is why I should agree to that, but let's follow that up. So I'll take that.
Okay. And I guess we'd also assume speaking of the camera, the cameras we should start, we should talk a little bit about that and executive session and next steps.
We can.
Just so that we have a sort of idea going forward, because I think we also will need to, probably need to catch up with the town about timing.
It should be available until July 1st.
Yeah, so we should check on that because if everyone comes on July 1st, there isn't a month.
Ah.
Because we don't have the tax receipts necessarily from everything.
I'm sorry.
So technically it's available July 1st, but we want to be good corporate citizens, shall we say?
Perfect.
And working with the town to make sure that at the point that we would be looking for that money, that it's a comfortable point for them and they're not chuffing from one account to the next.
Excellent.
We can do that.
Okay.
Legislature?
We had a happy parting at Silver Lake recently with Mr. John Creed retiring from school committee service after decades of service to three communities. I was lucky enough to listen to his legislative reports for many months and had taken the onus upon myself to try and live up to his reputation. I know that's going to be impossible to do. Just to let you know, there's been some guidance from MLESC Legal saying that school committees may take positions on download initiatives, but we may not use the resources of the district, we may not use personnel, stationary, other supplies, including media rooms and facilities. And if we choose to hold an informational session, we're allowed to do those things, but we can't take a stand in any of the literature that we send. We did take recently a vote or a decree to send to the representatives of both charter schools in Massachusetts, and that type of action is permitted. We just need to be very cautious and careful before November's elections. The Senate met yesterday and today to talk about the budget implications for Denit. It sounds like Circuit Breaker is going to be fully funded. So Circuit Breaker again is a reimbursement for last year's expenses that come in this year, and they're saying they're going to fund it at the 75% level. They're also talking about redefining where low-income students, which can impact our lunch and breakfast program. The Senate and the House have both talked about having that definition, doing that to them by December 2016. So it's a rather quick process for the government. Follow-up to that, Board of Education's meeting this week to discuss educator evaluations, which can have impacts on contractual language, something we need to pay attention to, and also the future of Denit. And last but not least, the president recently made some remarks, but also some directives that are bringing focus back to the fact that there are already state and federal mandates about the treatment of children who are transgender. And I would like us to just keep that in mind so we're not reacting whenever we have a family that come to us in need and also to be ready to educate and work with those families to make everyone comfortable with any situation that may arise.
Thank you. This one move on to Peter's report.
Thank you. Peter was unable to make the meeting this evening with a change of date, but he did give his report, which you should have in front of you. Currently, there are 221 students at the Denit, and we have very busy next several months as you can see the schedule. I don't feel the overwhelming need to read it to you, I'll take sure, because everyone in the committee is able to do that. Probably a couple of important dates though, to make sure you know. The grade six graduation is going to be June 20th at 6 o'clock, and that is a wonderful event if you've never attended. That is a lot of fun. Unfortunately, I will not be in the country, so it will be the first one I miss. I will be attending my son's wedding in Scotland, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll be fine.
Is that what you keep telling yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Fine, I'm fine. You are in public, Joy. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Lots of wonderful events coming up though.
All right. Keeping it busy. Casa's been busy.
Casa's been busy. I think the last meeting, what I know of, there was a teacher appreciation luncheon last week, so thank you teachers for anything I can do. I know that Field Day is coming up as well, and that's all I have in my interest of writing up. There are, you guys go ahead.
I know Casa's not charged, but I know Fun Night's next Thursday.
That's right.
I'm a wicked psyched about going.
Yep.
I know it has a more official name, but that's what it's called in my house, Fun Night at School. I know it's tied into the curriculum and I appreciate the teachers who spend their time after hours entertaining the families and kids and they get really excited about it.
All right. Christine?
Thank you. Tonight's financial, we have just over a month left to go in the year and our budget has held up pretty well. Never been too many issues that have prepped up on us. I am going to bring to your attention those issues that have, that do exist. On page two of the detail, it's the substitute account. We've talked about that back and forth and we've had a couple, we have a couple of long-term subs in place. So that in addition to the day-to-day subs, it's creating this deficit of $19,631.08. But there should be a corresponding surplus in the teaching line because not all the staffs are getting paid for the time that they're being taught. The next deficit is on page five of the detail in the special education section, the telephone account down near the bottom, $55.04. And I think I had mentioned this earlier, and this has been a function of the E-rate funding dropping off quicker than we had expected, and this is what we're seeing in the telephone accounts. The next area of concern is on page six, just flip over. And the second account, the second number from the top of the page, deficit of $793.09 in our paraprofessional account. What's happened is people aren't working necessarily where we had budgeted them, so we're going to see a surplus in the regular teaching line, paraprofessional account, whereas we're seeing the deficit in this account. It's just that some of the bodies have shifted around during the year. And then the final number I wanted to bring to your attention is in the middle of the page, under special education transportation, there is a deficit of $6,533.09. That's where we expect to be at year-end based on our current transportation needs. And that's it. Any questions?
And so all of those, all the deficits we expect will be offset within?
Yes, within our budget, yes, all of the deficits, there is sufficient, there are sufficient dollars in the budget to offset that.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
In your packet, you will find a summary of our year-end review, and it's hard to believe that a year has already gone by. I only have a few more months to still use the excuse that I'm still new, and I will savor those months. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight some of our accomplishments from this past year, so if you could follow along with me. As you know, we have transitioned three new central office administrators, our superintendent, myself as the assistant superintendent, and our administrator of special education. We, in the process, we moved the administrator of special education's office to the central office, which has been a nice transition. It's nice to have them close by to have those conversations. Joy and I also participated in induction programs for the superintendency and the assistant superintendency, which have been very successful and very helpful. We also continued to have monthly in-district administrator meetings, so that's some of our accomplishments under administration. Under curriculum and assessments for kindergarten through sixth grade, as you know, we have adopted a K through 5 curriculum resource for science that is aligned with Massachusetts STE frameworks. We completed the 14-month curriculum review in classroom pilot by 29 teachers and adopted the interactive science in grades K through 5. We are beginning the process of reviewing grades 6 through 8 science curriculum resources, so it's a nice transition to that. We also integrated, our objective was to integrate a K through 4 assessment system to help guide instruction and intervention supports. We completed a year-long pilot of STAR assessment by 19 teachers in grades 2, 3, and 4, and in the process, adopted the STAR assessments district-wide in grades 2 through 4. We completed a spring pilot of Ames Web assessments for 10 teachers in grades K through 1, and also had really positive feedback from teachers regarding the use of the STAR assessment to help guide instruction. So that's nice to have those benchmark assessments so that our teachers can use that to guide their instruction and note the progress that the students are making. We transitioned to a different elementary report card. We have letter grades in core content areas in grades 3 through 5. It was a very smooth transition. It was much smoother than I had anticipated. The feedback from parents and staff regarding the updates was very positive, and the specific feedback from staff regarding student motivation to excel was extreme as well, so that was really great to see. As you know, all four districts completed the CPR process, our coordinated program review, in special education, English Language Education, Civil Rights, and Title I. Staff, students, and families were interviewed and observed, and we should be receiving those reports soon from the state. The Title I review was considered a desktop review, and the Title I coordinator was commended for exemplary documentation and organization. In technology, we, our elementary school Chrome cards were deployed to support each grade level, so we have a plethora of Chrome cards, Chromebooks here at the Denit, which has been extremely helpful in our transition to the new state assessment system, which is, has been conducted online. Under professional development, we transitioned to an online resource called Teach Point for in-district professional development registration. Teachers were able to go on and access registration for in-district opportunities online and then receive professional development points through that system and store them in their folders. We have two graduate courses that were offered, a data course through Teachers 21 and Skewful Teacher, Skewful Teaching through Research for Better Teaching. We also continued with our retail updates, which is our SEI endorsement that some of our teachers will need to be participating in. We also had three district professional development days, which focused on social thinking and technology, and they were very successfully attended. Our state assessment system, our goal was to create a common plan to ensure a smooth transition, and the PARK action plan was created with six goals under the topics of instructional strategies, professional development strategies, and technology strategies. That plan was reevaluated on a weekly, sometimes weekly and monthly basis to ensure that our goals were being met, and they have been. Under wellness, we reviewed the Denit Elementary Breakfast Plan and began the development of a plan for regional implementation, and I'm happy to report that Halifax, we're looking at starting a program in Halifax based off of the progress that Denit has made in the breakfast program. So thank you to Denit. Sleep study, we created a subcommittee with representatives from school, from the school committees, staff, and families. We met monthly with the subcommittee to review research and created and distributed a survey for staff, students, families, and community members. We also had 13 elementary teacher leaders, which were called educational leaders, in grades kindergarten through grade 6, that were appointed for this past school year to support implementation of curriculum frameworks and increase communication throughout the region. They were also in charge of filtering information and updates to grade levels in each building. Our new teacher induction program was updated. There were five new administrators and 15 new teachers that participated in the program this past year. Michaela Gill, who's the assistant principal at the high school, one of the assistant principals, and myself, completed a mentoring course to update and improve the new teacher induction program. This consisted of having monthly meetings for the elementary and the secondary combined, which was different than in the past, and the mentors also attended with their new teachers. We are under ELL regulations. We participated in the free retail course for teachers that could qualify. We were just informed also that the DESI received a grant, so there will be one more year of the free course. However, it will only be applicable to teachers that currently had students that couldn't get into courses, or in Denit's case, we had two new students come to the Denit school that are considered ELL students after the September 1st date of recording that to the state, so they will be able to attend the course as well. We also had an ELL course designed by two teacher leaders, Lada Tarashka from Silver Lake Middle School and Karen Lundie from KES. They designed and offered the course twice so that teachers could obtain 15 PDPs in the area of ELL for relicensor. And our ELL handbook was updated with the composition of the new regulations and guidelines that poured by DESI. Under building and safety, our committee met throughout the year to update emergency protocols, and the committee consisted of police, fire, and administrators from all three towns. We also updated policies, and our policy manual is updated and posted online. And lastly, under civic and academic achievements, just to highlight two, Denit students in grade 6 graduated from the Bear Program with Officer Dana Smith. It was a wonderful, wonderful event to attend. And October turned into a month of pink at Denit, where the students raised money for breast cancer awareness. On your sheet, you will see more that was accomplished at the other schools, but those were just some that I'd like to highlight for Denit. It's amazing how much we can accomplish in a year, and it's really with support of the administration, but the teachers and paraprofessionals in each building are really remarkable, so I just want to give credit where credit is due. So thank you. That is our year-end review. However, I do want to inform you of Title I Summer School. This summer, students in grades K through 2 will be invited to attend a summer school program at Denit Elementary School. Students entering grade 7 will be invited to attend the middle school summer school program, and the programs will be offered by highly qualified teachers who will provide students instruction in the areas of reading, writing, and mathematics. The summer program will occur from July 12th through July 28th, and will be held on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays of those weeks. Under our assessment update, DESI has put out the testing calendar for the 2016-2017 school year. The calendar contains one testing window, which is later in the year, which is replicating very similar to the current PARK schedule, and that is between the dates of April 3rd and April 20, I'm sorry, May 26th of the 2016-2017 school year. And an important date under assessment is tomorrow, May 26th. If anyone is able to attend from 3:30 to 5 o'clock, there will be an MCAS 2.0 forum at the high school for the South Shore Region that Melissa Fontaine, who is the social studies department chair at the high school, coordinated with DESI. The forum will be an opportunity to provide feedback to DESI regarding the regarding their work, work groups, recommendations, which can be found on the DESI website. And that is open to staff, families, school committee members, anyone that is willing to and would like to attend.
Can I ask something about, can I just ask one question on that?
Sure.
Did you say it starts at 3:30?
Mm-hmm.
How, where did they come up with this start time on it? Just because, I mean, I'm sure that these are people that, like, if you wanted to hear about it, I don't know. It's just a off-the-table thing, maybe you can ask somebody about it.
Sure.
My guess is it's designed mainly for teachers.
Okay.
So it's at the end of the school day. You're right, if it's designed for parents, it should have been after five or after seven.
Are they invited?
I believe they could come.
Yes, it's open.
It is open, but I think the main purpose of it is for teachers. Sort of way of, you're right.
MCAS 2.0 is going to be a cultural shift, especially at the high school level because of the graduation requirements that the state currently imposes on the old MCAS. Our Silver Lake students are still taking the MCAS at the high school level because of those requirements. So it's important to take that time to educate them. Then we can see how it goes and educate the parents as well in the end with some later parent workshops.
And it's not only for high school. It's being held at the high school, but they have the space for it. But it is, it is, I've encouraged our ed leaders, our educational leaders, the teacher leaders in the district to, to attend if possible, as well as our administrators and curriculum coordinators.
But I would echo what Mike says. It's something that's very pertinent to the parents' upbringing.
Absolutely.
Should we reconsider putting someone out at the start?
I mean, I would imagine even for some of the teachers, it might be difficult too, but, I mean, because they're going home, they're going to get their kids, they're going to go to dinner, right? Just like it's the middle of the day.
Yeah. And lastly, our start time survey, just wanted to update you on that. The Silver Lake Regional School District and Superintendency Union 31, as you know, are in the process of evaluating the sleep needs of our students and whether or not we should change the start times of our schools. We surveyed families, staff members, community members, and students through an online survey that was posted from April 27th through May 6th. And a snapshot of the results are in your packets. We were really overwhelmed with the responses that we received. We received over 1,700 responses. So we really appreciate everyone that took the time to go forward. As you can see, the results are, are really split across. They were very representative of each district, which I was very pleased with. But whether or not to change the start times or which option would be best, we still need to do some more investigation as a, as a subcommittee. And no recommendation will be made to the school committees at this time. We still need to have some further investigations as to the impact. So thank you very much to everyone that participated. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Is it just me or do these numbers not make sense?
Yeah, we did look at some of the numbers, they didn't seem, maybe people that, I don't know. Is, is some of the numbers seem a little, a little off? I mean, um...
I mean, people take surveys and don't do them all the time, that happens. But if you look at option three, you know, 47% who say that support or strongly support not making any changes, yet 51% say the school should vote on something.
Yes.
If you take the neutral folks that really don't care one way or another, you're at 65%. So right there, you got, there's a little bit of an issue. But it, I mean, it does, it's really impressive how many people responded.
Responded.
I mean, and, and, and yeah, you're absolutely right. I was looking at those numbers about the schools you're most associated with, and they're, they're pretty, they're pretty representative, which is great. But I feel bad for the committee because I'm not sure what you're going to do with it.
Thank you.
I was wondering how many, because when I did it, I did it for both my kids. So, so I did it twice.
Good.
So, so she could, yeah.
And I did it three times.
Right.
Or twice. Well, I have one, one else going too here, so I did it twice.
You know, this, the, the representation of the overall thoughts about changing the start times, should the school committee consider voting to approve a change? We also looked at that as a subcommittee and we're very thrilled by that, that data alone. Because it doesn't compare and match to option three, which is what I would think would somewhat similar.
It's closer.
Right.
It's, it's off by, it's off by statistical.
Right. And I wonder, that also makes me wonder if the question was clear enough. You know, was that, is that, does that have a role in, in it? Whenever I look at data where there's some data that's skewed, I look at other factors and that is definitely one of them.
Yeah, because the option one, the option one was like almost even. Opposed in four. And then the option two was, was, you know, I added up three together for the opposed. It's like 74% on this other start time. But the, you know, on the option one, when you look at, if you're going to start at nine and go to three, I would imagine for the teachers, first grade, second grade, kindergarten, I mean, at three o'clock, I mean, they gotta be almost done, right? I mean, you would think at like 1:30, 2 o'clock, like that range, they're probably all set, right? And I didn't, in the, on this, the one here with the pickups and all that, what was the, just the NA's, just, they don't want to answer anything on that? Because that was high too, that was 33%.
What was fairly noticeable on the survey too were the comments. They were extremely strong for or extremely strong against. I mean, there really wasn't much in the middle. I mean, people had really very strong opinions on it. It was, it was very interesting and it was fairly evenly split. But the, but the comments were quite heavy about the change.
Yeah, the comments seemed a little divisive, you know, in looking at, looking at them in overall picture. And so we discussed that as a subcommittee as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess the only thing you're easy enough to decide is option two, though.
Right. That's not favorable.
But it's pretty balanced with one and three. So I guess that's helpful, but...
And I, I, I didn't, it's not on the survey, but are we going to, are they going to, are we going to do another survey again? Do you think, or no?
We haven't discussed it as a subcommittee at this time.
Because I didn't know if, I didn't know if you would, if you, if something would be on there like, it's either, it's either for the students and the teachers and they could survey, when you get up into the levels of the middle school and high school, what's, what's the tardiness percentage, you know, how do they feel to the other students? Do they fall asleep?
Yes.
I don't know, I thought like questions like that, if we were going to, if we were going to put in the students and the teachers to answer, some of those questions might, might be interesting because when it comes back, maybe some parents that have some doubts or whatever, they could kind of see what's happening with this, with their students when they get out. Because my daughter's going to, she's going to go to seventh grade. I mean, and her clock's already changed. So, and my son, I mean, he's up at 5:01.
Right. And it is, it is definitely something that we, when you look at the research, the research is there. It's very strong, it's very much in favor that our secondary students need a later start time. But then when you look at the factors that, that trickle in, I mean, in an ideal world, every, we'd all start at 8:30, you know, everyone. But, but unfortunately, finances and budgets really, really hinder that. Buses, exactly, that's, that's exactly what, the transportation. And I think that when we look at it, you know, do we want to compromise our, our early, you know, our young learners who, starting at nine o'clock when they've been up since five o'clock, six o'clock? I mean, that was really a struggle for us at the subcommittee level to look at and hear from the representatives from the elementary schools to think, you know, is that really compromising the, the, the learning, the, the real crucial learning time that happens in those early years? And would that really hinder, hinder some of their learning? So I'm, I'm actually now relooking at this, John. And when I, when I look at option one and option three, and if you combine them, it is very reflective of, of what this final thing is saying, that we're split.
I think there's, there's something about this question that you're right.
Right.
But it's, it's closer. But then the interesting thing that you're saying is that the thing that probably would make no sense if you're doing it is two, which is clearly close. So, so we're not in the worst place.
From, from a child-first perspective, option number two is the ideal combination.
So...
But we're dealing with community, not just child.
The concern is, you know, early start times at the buses, you know, being, having a five-year-old at the bus stop in the dark.
And also...
Which is true on the secondary level.
Some of this might largely be taken out of our hands because there is legislation at the State House right now that's discussing school start times for the entire state. It's in chambers, it's not on the floor, but it has been brought up multiple times by very strong interest.
And was there, has there been any discussion at the monthly meetings of, if, as we keep going forward with, with the meetings, maybe like a pilot? Pilot for the students, that, like, you know, you take a part of kids out and see? Anything like that to see and measure the results from, from that at the end? If one did not, do we ever?
I don't believe we could do that schedule-wise or contractual-wise for the teachers. It's a great thought. But that's, that's what we're, where we're at, Mike, is exactly what you're saying, is we're starting to throw out ideas. You know, what could be some way of looking at this? You know, we just, we couldn't financially afford having the buses run silently because we basically doubled the cost of, of the bus contracts. That's not even a possibility. We just signed a bus contract for five years.
And our cost is, what, a hundred, $100,000 roughly for the bus? So you're talking about almost 4% increase to our budget.
Right, right. I mean, that, that's...
Let's put that in real terms. It's just for buses.
Right, right.
Yeah, I know, it's just a thought. Because 38% of the people say that the, that transportation is not an issue for them. So that means that they're, you're, they're dropping off and picking up. That's how I, that's how I read that. They're not taking the bus. So, I mean, I know, but then you get the contract side. So I understand that, but I'm saying like on the pilot side, you had like, if there was students that volunteered to do it, the parents, you know, wanted to participate in it for a short time.
The hard thing about starting that early for the elementary is it takes a lot longer for the younger kids to get them out. I mean, just breakfast is not, you know, if I recall in high school, I think breakfast was about two minutes, is like, have something, you went out the door. Now, it's not, you know, where it's the whole thing, and everyone's, so...
But, but if you're interested, I know that the committee's going to continue to work next year. And, you know, if you have creative ideas, you know...
Yeah, I just get, I just get a ten because it's too early. That's all.
Right, but, you know, if you have some other ideas, Mike, you know, that's what we needed, people to think outside the box. So you can definitely email me some of those ideas.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I love those.
That would be wonderful. Yeah.
Was it four o'clock or somewhere?
Right, currently it's at four, yes. But anyway, the committee did a great job and we got a huge response, which means it is a hot-button topic.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah.
You want some numbers, Mike?
It's Joan. We like grabs. Thank you. So you have in your packet the 2016-2017 meeting schedule. I wanted you to just take a moment, if you could, and look that over. You'll notice that the Monday, July 18th would be the closeout meeting. That's to accommodate the town, so that's a slightly different schedule. So that's a date just to notice. Often, we do end up canceling the August date, although that's, you know, whatever worked out for summer, depending on how things go. Other than that, I believe the dates are fairly consistent. I think the only other date that's a little bit unusual is Monday, December 19th. And that's because we would not normally come in during Christmas vacation week.
I have a proposal to make to the committee. Sir, I'm taking Silver Lake on a field trip and I'd like to do the same with us if the committee agrees. I, I would like to propose that we hold our January 23rd meeting at the Town Hall, at the Townhouse. Just to show our faces in the center of town right before we get into budget season and starting to meet with the finance committee to make ourselves more available and accessible to the town folk.
I think that's fine, I think it's very closer to it. I want to think about our start times. I mean, I, we can't make it too late because it depends with the select room meeting, whether they start back at 7:00 or whatever. You know, we should coordinate at that point and see how we can at least be there that some other folks can stop it. I think there probably isn't a space issue if they're going to keep meeting in the room further down. We could use the bigger room like that. I don't know, we're not sitting on that stage. But we can rearrange that, the bigger room to do that. So I think that makes sense.
And I'd like to propose that, and I don't know how everybody feels about this, but maybe our start times could be at 5:00 instead of 4:30 for our meetings. I don't know how everybody feels about that. But that, that...
I support that, if that helps you get here a little bit easier. To you guys, because part of the link to four to the times...
Anything before 7:00 is great. Because that's all my other meetings.
A half hour is better for me too.
It doesn't affect them one way or another, so if it makes it easier for people.
We just need, we just need to be caught in the same phase where we need to be other places. Across town, this time, I don't think it's that far. But I'm not sure what the Board of Selectmen is going to be doing with their meeting times. Because I know the six and six-thirty times will be tough for them. But if they're going to move back, I think that gives us, so I'm fine with five.
Okay, so if people like to make the motion, we can make that official.
I'd like to accept the meeting schedule as written with the amendment of start times now being read as 5:00 PM and to schedule our January 23rd meeting at the Town Hall. Second? One favor?
Thank you. One of the things that happened with us changing the emergency, excuse me, changing the date was that Chief Cottillon was going to come and talk with you a little bit about some work that we've done throughout the year. With the date change, she wasn't able to join us this evening. But I wanted to just share with you some work that we have done throughout this year. We have what's called emergency protocols in all of our schools. And they are something that are in-house documents. It's how we handle any sort of emergencies. It would include fire drills, it would include safety drills that we have periodically. This past year, we have spent the year reviewing all of our emergency protocols. And we met with the fire and police chiefs throughout the year. And we formulated school-specific multi-hazard evacuation plans for each school. Some of the people that participated in the meetings was myself, Chrissy, Mr. Veneto, Principal Bowdre from Halifax, the elementary school principal, Paula Bartosziak, the intermediate school, Mike Banbury. And then from Silver Lake Regional High School, we had Steve Bled, who coordinated the meetings, and assistant principal, Jason Canetta from the middle school. We also had the fire chief and police chief from every district attend all the meetings. So it was a very well-attended meeting. I was really impressed with the turnout and the dedication to making the meetings and for input. We decided that we are going to recommend a major change to our protocol and we want to adopt a new approach. It's called the ALICE protocol. Many school systems have been adopting this. And it's a way to deal with armed intruders in schools. Why are we making this change? Why are we making this recommendation? The Department of Homeland Security, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Massachusetts Task Force on School Safety and Security recommended changing from the previous policy of shelter-in-place to a more flexible and empowering response. The U.S. Department of Education is recommending providing protocol behind traditional lockdowns. ALICE is an acronym. And what it stands for, the A is for alert. All people can announce information, no codes used. Lockdown, teachers and students barricade themselves into a room. Inform, constant information update transmitted over PA or via technology. Counter, if encountering the intruder, take steps to stop the event. And e-evacuate, get away from danger if possible. The changes that it would mean in making this move, our past practice was only a principal would be allowed to make announcements. Now, anyone can make an announcement and there are no longer codes. We're not going to say code yellow, we're not going to say colors. We're going to say what's happening, so people, there's no confusion. Lockdown, all students and staff were trained in traditional lockdown, which is called shelter-in-place. Now, we're going to have an enhancement with barricade training. Inform, we, past practice was we inform, we provided information after a lockdown. Now, we will have real-time updates. Counter, previously was not practiced. Again, it was really just sort of a hide and shelter-in-place. Now, it's used as a last resort to interrupt a situation and to get students to safety. Evacuate was practiced, but not in conjunction with lockdown previously. Now, we... Now, we are going to ask our teachers to evacuate if it is safe to do so. The implementation of this will be in August of 2016. We're going to provide training, which is our opening school before the students come. We're going to provide training for the review of the new protocol, and then in October of 2016, we're going to provide some school drills on the new protocol. The other thing that's going to be happening is Denit will be on cutting edge. In August, we're going to actually provide ALIS training in this building. Officer Dana Smith will be coordinating it with Mr. Venido, and we're pretty excited to have it in district. We already have several of our administrators trained, and we will be sending several others. This is something that we have been very thoughtful in making this change. We've had a lot of discussions about it. It will look slightly different in each of the buildings, depending on situations and age groups of our students, but this is something that the safety and security of our students is our primary objective, and this is the right thing to do.
Well, as a teacher who, in my district currently, they did this last year, just as a teacher, it's extremely empowering to know that you are fully backed by administration to do this and to get students to CAFES, which is our job every day. It is extremely powerful for the students, and having that information flow freely is extremely helpful in those situations. Being married to law enforcement, I can tell you, he's in favor of this as well. So, it only gives teachers the decisions to make, and we make decisions in split seconds daily. It's our job. So, I think it's a wonderful thing to have this here and have it here at Denit, and it's great.
I've also been trained in ALIS, and I fully agree. I can't even approach you on level of understanding, but I fully agree that ALIS is the way to go.
I don't need a vote for this. This is something, this is not a policy. This is really just information for you. I wanted to let you know that this is something that, we've been working on this very diligently, and it's involved a tremendous number of people, and it's been very thoughtful. I believe our implementation will be very thoughtful, and again, it's something that is the right thing to do. So, it's really just for your information.
Oh, yeah, that's--
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to mention was that in the FY 2017 budget, I wanted to personally thank our selectmen and our finance committee for their supports of our budget. It went through without any discussion and with the full support, and it's been a wonderful year, first year for me to get budgets through. I'm absolutely thrilled. The year before was not quite smooth, so it was very pleasant to have a unanimous support in the town so far. So, Halifax has voted their budget and has supported Silverlake. Clinton has voted their budget and has supported Silverlake, which means Silverlake also has a budget, because they just need two town support. Kingston's town meeting will be June 11th, Saturday, and we will be voting the elementary and intermediate and Silverlake, but since Silverlake's already been approved, we already have a budget in Silverlake. But it will be nice to also have the help of Kingston support us. So, I did just want to thank truly the selectmen and the finance committee members for their support and for the town meeting members, and also for our upcoming cameras, which will also be very important during some of these changes in our emergency protocols. The last thing I did just want to mention was as part of the FY 17 budget, you may remember last month, we talked about friends' contract, and I distributed it to you last month, and we were just going to vote to approve it, and John has it to sign the contract if you don't have any disagreements with it.
Mr. Chair.
Excellent.
I make a motion that we accept the contract with council and continue along with the services. One favor?
Aye.
And just on the, on the prior discussion, I mean, I think certainly it's great to have the support of the selectmen and the FinCon, and that's how we hope to always do that with the budget, but I think, you know, credit is also due to the administration and to Principal Venido for being able to pull together a budget that one meets the needs for the building and for the students, but also was very epically tight, and we've been doing that now for a couple of years, and that's great, and that certainly helped.
Right, absolutely.
And I think there was, as we attended the FinCon meeting with our budget, I mean, I wouldn't say they were shocked, they were very happy.
Yes.
It was, it was really, really well done. Some of that, of course, is going to go ebb and flow--
Absolutely.
--with, you know, with our evoke students and with the special ed, and also, you know, even for the school, I think it's, and we did discuss this with FinCon, we discussed this with both selectmen too, is that, you know, we've been a couple of years here where it's been, I mean, where we kept the budget very tight, and that may not be able to happen every year, but I think, you know, we're building up some good credibility that once we ask for money, it's because we really need it. So, thank you. Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I have to add an amendment to my PAC report. I purposely held it because of its personal considerations. But for disclosure, I would like to tell the board that I have completed my internship with the executive director of the PAC, and I appreciate her assistance in that endeavor. I asked for clearance from the committee when I accepted the internship with her, and I wanted to report that obligations will-- Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn from regular session, not to return for the purposes of entering into executive session to discuss safety, security, and negotiations. Do you have a second?
Aye.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for, for watching, and we will see you next time. Good night.